We'll agree with you.
Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to call the Warwick County Commissioners Board Meeting to Order. Today is January 23rd, 2023. Sheriff, will you lead us in place?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first order of business here is a public hearing, so I'll entertain a motion to recess the Commissioners' meeting and enter into the public hearing.
Second?
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Go ahead.
Jim Morley, Jr., project engineer.
So this is the matter of a partial vacation, existing 50-foot drainage and public utility easement located at 9344 Warwick Trail, Newburgh, Indiana, in Warwick County. They did sit down notice. We have all the certified green cards, and we do have letters from the utilities. Nonobjection.
So this project is on the Warwick Trail roadway right across the street from the Hill South Rehab Hospital. When Warwick Trail was originally designed, we did the design work on it. The ground it is on was significantly lower than the road itself, and so we had fill slopes and roadside ditches on that road with the intent that eventually, as development occurred, the ground would be raised up and the roadside ditches would disappear. And so that's what's happened here. Originally, we had to have a 50-foot easement on there for fill slopes and ditches and that kind of thing. And now, as part of this development, they're filling up their site and getting rid of a roadside ditch because it all become kind of the front lawn of the new development. And so we are seeking to vacate the outer 30 feet of the 50-foot easement. The inner 20 feet, the 20 feet right next to the road, will continue to be there to be allowed for utilities in the future. There are no utilities where we're at now, and leaving 20 feet leaves plenty of room for utilities in the future. There is no, there's a, water is on the other side of the street, and the sanitary sewer kind of runs up through this project. And so, and so we would ask that the outer 30 feet of the 50 feet be vacated, which is the, that's the picture you're looking at there, Dan, is the gray area is the part we're asking for to be vacated. And this came in front of a drainage board, maybe like a month or two ago, also. There's a pretty drainage board.
Mr. Sherwood, I know you've seen this several times now. Any additional comments?
No additional comments. As Mr. Morley reported, it was previously agreed to and approved at Drainage Board.
Is there anyone here in the audience to speak for or against this? The record show no. I'll entertain a motion to, we're back into the Commissioners' meeting.
Motion to move back into the Commissioners' meeting. Second?
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. And next order of business is action on the public hearing. So we need to approve.
Or ordinance number?
That's on the O2.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, sir.
See that there? Make a motion to approve the vacation in ordinance number 2023-02.
Second? First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Well, you're next on the agenda. It says no business.
No business.
Still the case. Thank you.
We're done. Thanks.
Next order of business is our action agenda, approval of minutes from the January 9th, 2023 meeting.
Make a motion to approve. Second?
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. And next order of business, remaining 2023 appointments. That's all I have. I don't have any, any notes or papers. I believe we had the Tourism Board and the Health Board.
That's correct.
Yes.
Do you have that list with you?
I don't have a clean list. I'm sorry.
I don't need a clean list.
So we have two appointments and a vacated seat. Someone moved. Is that accurate?
Correct.
So is it okay if we just do these one at a time?
Yes.
I believe Chris Fulford has moved, and Todd Glass has been suggested by the Tourism Board for that seat. So I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Make a motion to approve Todd Glass.
Second?
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next one is Bo Dial is up for reappointment for another term.
I'm not sure. I think we need to reach out to Bo and see if he's interested.
Yeah, do, Sherry, do you want to?
She's saying something.
Sherry Sherman, Warwick County Chamber and Tourism Board. Bo is interested in having another term as well as I am.
Okay, so got it. Thank you. So I'll entertain a motion for Bo's reappointment.
She'll move.
Second?
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero, and as Sherry has stated, she's willing to serve another term. So I'll entertain a motion for that one as well.
We'll make that motion.
Did you make that motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Second?
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Uh, let's see here. Okay, we have three appointments on the County Health Board. General Public Representative, a licensed physician, and a licensed physician. Aaron, can I have your help up here for just a second? One of the licensed physicians, the spreadsheet says Dr. Jerry Like, but I have a Dr. Parker, I believe, penciled in.
Yes, Dr. Like passed away during his term, and you guys appointed Dr. Parker to fulfill that term, and he's expressed his interest as to serve a full term.
Got it. Thank you. I wasn't, wasn't recalling that.
That's all you need from me?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to reappoint Dr. Parker for a full term.
So moved.
Second?
We have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Dr. Barnett, I spoke with personally, so I know he's interested in serving again. I'll entertain a motion for Dr. Barnett to be reappointed for a four-year term.
So moved.
Second?
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. And then Joy Brown, Erin, is she wanting to continue to serve? I don't know. But I'll entertain a motion to reappoint her as well.
I don't know.
Not either. You want to hang on to that one?
We can.
Okay, yeah. Table that one again?
Sure. Make a motion to table.
Second?
First and second to table, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. And that's all, Heather? Okay, next order of business is the County Administrator's consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the county auditor claims voucher report dates from 1/11/23 through 1/24/23, and the payroll date of 1/13/20, should say 23 on there. The declaration of the auditor's HP plot printer is surplus, and declaration of surplus in the auditor's office, an HP color laser jet, and an Olympus digital voice recorder. Next item is the sheriff's salary contract. Then we have the Parks Department ICE contract, the economic development lease agreement, and the clerk's monthly report dated December 2022.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second?
We have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you, Mr. President.
That all?
Yes.
Thank you. Next order of business is our County Attorney.
Mr. President, first item on the agenda is amendment to PTO policy. I was trying to finalize and make sure that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed to finalize that transition to the PTO. There are a couple of changes just to make the current policy consistent with how the previous policy was worded in terms of sick days and vacation days and what we were entitled to upon termination, as well as sellback throughout the year. So just cleaning up and making sure that we've caught everything in the transition, making sure that nothing changes in terms of how it worked before to how it does now under this PTO policy. These were all discussed and confirmed with both Heather and Chitika as changes that needed to be made.
Who's amending this, Andrew?
Sorry?
Who's amending this? Is this your office?
I, yes, I do.
You got, in your red amendment, fourth line down, employee is spelled wrong.
I would get it. Yep.
So is this final version correct?
We think so.
Yeah, for the PTO section of it, yes.
Very last item on the last page is in section 10.4. Would no longer be necessary in the handbook dealing with when an employee terminates their employment with the county. That section discussed what they were entitled to in terms of sick days and vacation days, which is now handled under this PTO policy, so we don't need section 10.4.
There's been a lot of time spent on this, a lot of back and forth, a lot of communication with both department heads and employees. So thanks, everybody, for their hard work. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not.
Same as yours. Appreciate the due diligence with Heather and Chitika and meeting with all the department heads. It was, it's been several, several months in the making, if not more than that. I know it's not been easy, and so with all the feedback, appreciate your due diligence on this. Assuming legal counsel, appreciate you guys helping us work through this.
You're welcome.
So you need a motion?
I do.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the handbook, employee handbook amendments dated 1/23/2023.
Second?
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is an interlocal agreement between Town of Newburgh and Warwick County, Indiana. This deals with a capital improvement project that Town of Newburgh is doing with Blue Lake Lift Station, and the county is also wanting to do some culvert replacements along Briar Cliff Drive. And so this interlocal agreement would be to close that road down and who was responsible for what work and kind of sharing some of that road closure responsibilities while each party is doing their respective improvements along that area. It's also been reviewed by Bobby, and I'm sure Steve Harvey has some comments as well.
Okay.
Steve Sherwood, on behalf of Bobby Howard, could not be at the meeting. This has been in the works for a couple of years. We finally got an agreement in place after going back and forth a couple different times. Essentially, we're going to take out a large metal culvert, replace it with a concrete box culvert. At the downstream end of our culvert across Briar Cliff Drive, there's a Newburgh pump station, which they're going to rework, and installing the new box culvert will require relocation of existing gravity lines and forest mains that are fed by the adjacent Newburgh Sewer Pump Station. They wish to lengthen the box culvert outside the rideaway. This agreement will take care of coordinating all those activities.
Steve, who's doing our work?
We will do our work ourselves.
So, Tim, this is in-house?
Yes. Highway Department will do it. We will rent a crane for the heavy lifting. Being the similar way we've replaced or installed any concrete box culvert in Warwick County.
Do we, do we put this project out to bid, or we just decided to do it ourselves?
We will do it ourselves. We do most of our box culverts ourselves. We do ask for and selected quotes for a low bidder on the manufacturing of the box culvert, and we do have a low bidder, and Town of Newburgh wanted to participate in the cost that we've got because it was substantially lower than what they were getting for their pricing.
That's covered in the agreement, right?
Yes.
So you're, the engineering team's good? Legally, it's good? All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Unless anybody has questions or comments.
So are we approving the improvements, or the interlocal, or both?
It'd be the interlocal, which describes what the improvements would be.
I make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement with Newburgh, reference the Briar Cliff sewage and drainage improvements.
Second?
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Project should happen late this summer if Newburgh meets its timetable.
Counsel, anything else?
Anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Next order of business is our County Engineer and Highway Superintendent, who isn't here, so Mr. Sherwood, it's all yours.
Yes, again, Steve Sherwood, attending on behalf of Bobby Howard, couldn't that be here? I have an agreement with American Structure Point for the design of a potential new Warwick County Highway Department and the 80 acres that the county owns and occupies out there where the Highway Department is located now. Proposed site will be between north of the existing Highway Department, south of the 4H Center. The agreement has some particulars. I believe it's for an expense of $30,000. Proceed with the design and all the items listed in the agreement. I will turn it over to the attorney for his comments on that agreement.
Legally, you don't have any changes. Just bring a couple items to your attention. It is $30,000. It's invoiced monthly as the time is accrued. It does state that it's approximately an eight to 10-week timeframe for completing the study, and then that would be from the initial kickoff meeting, which would be scheduled after this contract is approved. So in terms of your timeline of getting this project and design created of the eight to 10 weeks is satisfactory. If you would like that to be quicker or not, but just want to make sure you did see those two items as far as the general conditions that are attached to it. The only piece in here that I would think might be an issue with the county is if, in the event, the county would decide to terminate the agreement before it was completed, the county would have 15 days to pay for any services that have been rendered. That's kind of quick in terms of payment for the county, so we might suggest extending that to 30 or 45 days.
Easy enough.
Yeah, like the 45 days.
Mr. Saylor, I know you've been part of the very beginning of the conversation.
So just to explain this real, just a little to our, our audience. So I don't know how many of you have visited our highway, current highway facility in Booneville or out by the jail. It is in dire need to save a repair, or it has, it has served its life. We've, we've had folks kind of look at it. So this, what this does, this is an agreement with Structure Point to go with a, a, a design of, of facility that, that sits on a particular parcel of land out, out that we own. So what's, you know, we, as far as the funding component of this, this project, this renovation, will be paid off at the end of this year. So we're talking with our county council and, and, you know, the other commissioners. We, you know, if, if that just drops off, it just drops off. However, if we roll a project into that, into that opportunity to, to pay for that project or, or that bond, we could do another bond that won't raise the taxes to the taxpayer, so it just rolls right in. So we have the opportunity to, and this bond originally came, that we did this renovation was from the Judicial Center. So while it did drop off a year, the council reinstated it. So we could get a new facility that would serve this county for 30, 40, 50 years if it's done right, and really not cost the taxpayers any more in increase. And, and so, and, and what it really means to an individual, you know, the $200,000 value house is, is, is very few dollars. I don't know if I want to sit here and recite the exact dollars, but, because I don't know, but there's a range there of, you know, $20, $25 that would just stay in place to help pay for this. So, and over the course of years, we don't know. We don't know what the price is going to come into that. This is what this is a whole part of, to get a price so we can go see, see what we would need to, to raise. That's kind of what it is.
Thank you. Now you made me forget if we already made a motion or not.
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion, please.
So I, I will make a motion to move forward with this. One of the reasons we need to move forward with this, this has to be in place by December 31st because that bond payment drops off December 31st, so we have to have the obligation in place by January 1, or before January 1. The obligation drops off December 31st. We have to have the obligation set in place by December 1, I think, maybe, or something.
I think this blast payment is due January 10th or something like that, so we would need to have a replacement in place by the end of December, just to make sure we're, keep that rolling.
So we, this ball has to move forward. I know we got a lot of different things going on in the county with the, our new security center and that kind of thing. But again, this is, you know, we're not raising taxes on the security center, and we're not raising taxes for this facility. It's just going to keep on going, so it, it creates a lot of work for a lot of people sitting up here, but it's something that we need to do, and we're going to, we're going to keep pushing forward.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second?
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Is that all, Steve?
That's all I have on the engineers' business for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next order of business is our County Acquisition Manager, Sherry. County Fire Inspection Contract bids. She has an armor.
Thank you. All of you, for Andrew. Sherry Severs, Acquisition Administrator. I had, this is for services, this is for Warwick County Fire Protection, so for services, we don't have to advertise. I just invited four bids. I invited Tri-State Fire Protection, Corson Fire and Security, Armor Fire Protection, and Alpha Energy. I received from two bids, one from Corson and one from Alpha. And on Corson, well, on both, they just broke it down per building. Judicial Center, Old Historic Courthouse, Warwick County Jail, and the Warwick County Drug Court Building. In addition to that, Corson actually provided me breakdown of labor, overtime labor, Sunday and holiday labor, and then recharging and six-year maintenance and hydro test on fire extinguishers, prices on valve stems, pull pins, and also prices for new fire extinguishers. Alpha did not. So all of that information, Corson did give you a little cover letter on the front with some, I highlight the important information from Alpha, or excuse me, from Corson. And on Alpha, on the very last page, I do have a letter of recommendation from Jake Greer that I think is pertinent to the Commissioners to read as well. It's on the last page of the Alpha documents. All in all, when we figure total for all four buildings, Corson came in the annual price $6,754, and Alpha came in $6,457.50. The only thing I do want to point out is Corson does everything in-house. They do not sub anything out. Alpha does sub some of their services out. I don't know what particular services they sub out, but they do sub some of their services out. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, if I can.
Sherry, I've got a question, although I'm not sure how to word it. You know, when we talked to Jeremy, the jail commander, they have a lot of other fire suppression systems out there that the two buildings here don't have. I see all the fire extinguisher stuff here. I see turn tests for the fire pump. So this doesn't cover any other services other than those two things?
Each company has broke down what they cover. Both companies, Corson and Alpha, both sent representatives out, and they walked each building individually. So they walked the Judicial Center and the Old Courthouse with Brad, and then they met, Corson met Jeremy Holder and walked the entire, and Alpha met Larry Sawowski and, and did a tour out there, and then they walked separately the Drug Court.
So I guess, you know, the concern was having, you know, four or five vendors to juggle back and forth with all the fire suppression systems. This at least gets us closer to, that they're on it now.
The only one that's not going to have any vendors but them is Corson because they do everything in-house. Alpha does sub out some of their services. I don't know what services Alpha subs out. I'm happy to contact them and get a detailed list of what they do sub out.
Okay.
Mr. President, there's a page in here that does list out all of the things at the jail they do due to the kitchen fire suppression systems and everything.
Obviously, we're just saying this, so I'm kind of like to look at it with the staff at the jail. What do you think?
I don't disagree with that. I'm glad.
Yeah. Jeremy Holder is very knowledgeable.
Yes.
With the, the jail system out there. And in fact, before I started this, I did reach out to Jeremy to get names of companies that he's comfortable working with. The first three I have listed were companies that Jeremy gave me. The second one was another one that was recommended, or the last one, Alpha, was recommended, so I reached out to them as well.
So there's a, there's a lot of stuff here.
Lot of information.
Yeah, I would, Sherry, one of the things that I see in here, you know, it says 30 days, you know, Yeah, I would, Sherry, one of the things that I see in here, you know, it says thirty days, you know, from invoice date. You know, sometimes depending on the way the calendar falls, we struggle with that thirty day. Is there, is there a request at any time, or can I make a request anytime we do that? Can we, can we ask for a forty-five day? Just because, you know, I don't like being late. But if we could just kind of, just as a rule of thumb, just write that in.
Yep.
If some of my box add up, then, then we'll address that. You know, we got a new auditor and they might struggle a little bit.
I'm sure he'll do a fine job.
In business, we always had ninety days, no matter what. It was a ninety day. Well, and I think, I, I was just teasing about the auditor. But I, I do think sometimes the way the calendar falls, inappropriation of claims, that's just so different than, than private sector. You know, it just, it's sometimes it takes just a little bit more time.
And I, I think if you're just honest and upfront with them, and then I, I think we can add that to our contract, don't you think, Andrew?
Just be made part of any bid.
Yeah.
Any bid package you send out, that'd be one of the requirements that they have to include.
Okay.
No, no sooner than forty-five day pay.
Okay.
Just want to reveal a little more.
I, I wouldn't mind making a motion to table. Like Terry said, there's a lot of information, so.
Do you, in the meantime, do you want me to reach out to Alpha and find out what services that they do sub out?
I guess, yeah. It may say in the package. I don't.
If you would, and then also ask them about that, that thirty.
Okay.
Our next meeting on the thirteenth of February. Make a motion to table to February thirteenth, our next meeting.
Second.
Our first and a second to table, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Sherry.
Any other business before the board? Commissioners, anything? Before we adjourn, I have something I'd like to say briefly. I don't say things up here very often, but I think we're all probably aware of what happened in Evansville at the West Side Wellness Mart the other night. Sheriff, I'm going to look at you when I say this. The Evansville Police Department, the Vandenberg County Sheriff, went in and, and took care of business quickly and swiftly. And for that, I'm very proud of them. I think the commissioners support law enforcement and our entire public safety community. And I'm just, just really proud of that, that group of people. So that's what I have to say.
Agree.
Agree.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Our first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
I was trying to get, trying to get you to. You don't have to take that. Sir, only certified person.
I know I'm in trouble. Tara made me pay for my own lunch today.
Double XL. Double XL.